Welcome to the January 31st special meeting of the San Diego County Board of Education. I'm Board-
We get mics on now.
It's on. I am- I'm Board President Guadalupe Gonzalez. I live in District Two with the southwestern region. I will ask my fellow Board members to introduce themselves and their district.
Good evening. My name is Paulette Donellen. I represent District Four, which is Inland North County.
Good evening. Alicia Muñoz, District Three, East County.
Good evening. Rick Shea, North Coastal San Diego County.
Hello. Mark Powell. I represent District One, which is San Diego Central.
Okay. Also attending are San Diego County Superintendent Dr. Paul Gothold, Business Services Consultant Kristen Armadas, Administrative Assistant Superintendent Carmen Aguilar, and Legal Counsel to the County Committee, Christopher Scannell. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? There it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I want to welcome everyone tonight and tell you that I had a very interesting drive here. I didn't get on the freeway. I found all kinds of interesting streets in order to get here, and ways is wonderful. So, I'd like to move to Item 1C, the Approval of Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We now move to public comment on any items other than the the school district reorganization for Poway. Is there any public comment? No, there are none. Okay. We will now convene a meeting of the County Committee on School District Organization. Do I have to do this? Okay. Okay. Now we are convening a public hearing on the proposed change of election system and establishment of trustee areas for the governing board of the Poway Unified School District, and we will now open the public hearing. Item 2A1 is the Review of Guidelines for the Public Hearing. The order of speakers will be as follows. Spokesperson for the Poway Unified School District and individual speakers will be called in the order the speaker cards were submitted. The presentation by the designated spokesperson for Poway Unified School District shall be 10 minutes in length, and then individual speakers shall have up to two minutes to present testimony. Normally, the allotted time is a maximum of 20, but at this time, we thought it was correct to allow people to have their say. The allotted time, however, may be reduced if I think we're through with the number, right, of students? Okay. Speakers shall direct all testimony to the County Committee, and individual speakers will be asked to limit remarks to new information regarding the proposal and will not be permitted to cede any of their allotted time to another speaker. So now, for some background information on the public hearing, I would like to call on Business Services Consultant Kristen Armadas.
Good evening, President Gonzalez, Superintendent Gothold, and fellow members of the Board and public. This meeting is held in accordance with Education Code 5019 to enable residents of the district to present testimony to the County Committee on the method by which Poway Unified School District Governing Board intends to be elected and the map establishing the trustee areas that would implement that change. So the notices for this meeting were published in local newspapers and both the San Diego County Office of Education and the Poway Unified School District webpages and social media accounts. It was posted at all Poway Unified School District school sites and the district office and emailed to regular recipients of the Board Agenda. So I'd like to take a minute and review the folders that you have in front of you tonight, Board members. And so, on the right-hand side of your packet, you are going to find the Agenda for tonight's special meeting. You're going to find the Issue Paper that provides you with some additional background information. You're also going to find the Guidelines that the County Committee adopted for these types of public hearings. On the left side, you're going to find both Resolutions from the Poway Unified School District Governing Board that were both transmitted to you at the December Board Meeting. And you're also going to find all of the other drafted maps that were available during Poway's review process. And so, the County Committee is not taking any action this evening. They will be taking action at a future Board Meeting, to be determined. And so, contingent upon approval by the County Committee and the State Board's approval of a waiver request, if it is submitted, the new election system would be implemented for the November 2018 election. And at that time, there would be three seats that would appear on the ballot, and that would be Trustee Areas B, C, and D. And then, the implementation would become complete in the election year 2020, when the remaining two seats would become filled, and that would be for Seats A and E.
Thank you. Okay, so I would now like to call on the spokesperson for the Poway Unified School District. And it will be Doug Johnson, yes, or Mary Ann Kimphelps?
Good evening. Welcome, and thank you for coming to Poway Unified to hold this public hearing this evening. It is our pleasure to have all of you here at Poway Unified School District's Board Room. Obviously, tonight's hearing is to discuss the district's decision to move to buy trustee area elections for our school board trustees, beginning with the election this November. As you have reviewed all the documents and materials that were provided to you, we believe that we have worked really hard to ensure that we have engaged in an extensive public outreach. District staff spent considerable amount of time and effort to ensure that our public hearings and maps were accessible and widely communicated to our community, and it clearly worked, because I believe that I was told we collected the most amount of maps that were drawn and submitted for any one district. Despite the unusual and often difficult-to-grasp nature of this change in election systems, we received hundreds of public comments, scores of people who took the time to speak at our Board hearings on this issue, and 29 trustee maps were drawn and submitted for Board consideration using the online tool that we provided. You have in your meeting materials all of the background information on the district's districting process. As requested by the County Committee, our demographer, Dr. Douglas Johnson, will now discuss the factors that led the Board to select the Board Adopted Map 131. Dr. Johnson and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have about any part of this process, and again, it's a pleasure to have all of you here at Poway Unified this evening. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you. So, and it is a pleasure to be here. Thankfully, this is not the Board's first time going through this process with the district, so at the staff's request, I'll jump right into what we were looking at in the maps as we went through this process. And first of all, one of the key things to understand in Poway is the demographics. Generally, when we think California Voting Rights Act and Voting Rights Act, we're thinking of a underserved, protected-class neighborhood. In most of the California cases, it's been Latino neighborhood. That doesn't exist here. But in both the city and the school district, there is no Latino neighborhood. There is no heavily any protected-class neighborhood. It's a very integrated, diverse district. So, one of the unusual things is that the Latino percentage of eligible voters really wasn't a factor, because it's the same in every map. And there really is no way to draw a seat that would change that. So that traditional criterion is kind of off the table here, because it doesn't matter how you draw the lines, you're going to get essentially the same demographics in each district or in each trustee area. So, what are we looking at here? Number one, the district's looking to get into the safe harbor from a potential lawsuit and save the money. You know, that's what's driving all of these jurisdictions. We've worked with over 90 of the now 160 school districts that have made this transition change. And that is, of course, always the overwhelming goal. Then, obviously, the different jurisdictions look to comply at the Federal Voting Rights Act. So just mentioned, that's not really a factor here, because there's no issue with that here. And so, we're looking at drawing seats that will be used once. Each of these seats will hold an election either in 2018 or 2020, and then be redrawn. So this is a short-term map. It's weird to be doing this so late in the decade. So we've got five seats that'll hold elections either 2018, 2020, and then we'll redraw them. And so, we're looking at communities of interest, which is often discussed. We're looking at trying to be compact and to follow major roads so that the trustee areas will be easy for voters to understand, which, as you've seen, is tough, given the geography here, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And when we talk about- oh, and then we're looking, as we do in every jurisdiction, to try to not assert the voters' rights. So, the goal is always, obviously, the new elections will be in trustee area. Each trustee area will be voting. The question is, is will the voters get to decide which of the current Board members have earned reelection or not? It often gets framed as protecting the incumbents. It's not. They still have to run by trustee area. You know, each- anyone who wants to get reelected has to run in a trustee area and persuade the voters in that trustee area whether they deserve reelection. The question is, is that question of the Board being- getting reelection up to the voters? Or is my pen going to wipe them out? And we see this a lot, and it's often a consideration, and all the way up to the US Supreme Court has said, "Of course, you're going to look at this." And we're- and so, when you hear people say, as you did at your meeting the other night, this incumbent protection gerrymandering, it's not- the incumbents still have to run, and they still have to run in a new trustee area. The question is whether the voters get to decide whether they get reelected or not. So that's the key. That's a common consideration that is looked at just about everywhere, and of course, factored into the decision here. Then, the other question is about communities of interest. Now, when we think redistricting, we generally think compact communities. You think of nice-looking maps. But with schools, we often get a different approach, which is, we don't want a school board member to feel like they own a school or they own a community. That gets polarization. You end up with the Poway member and the Rancho Penasquitas member. So most of our client school boards actually intentionally try to make sure that each community has at least two board members who represent it, so that those parents have two board members they can go to, and none of the board members start feeling like they own a school. So these factors all came in. As I just mentioned, enormous community engagement. Most of our projects have very few people commenting, so this is great. This was actually the first school district ever put the online tool up. Most of the others had decided not- they didn't want to go into that kind of outreach and that kind of extent of effort. So this is the first one to put it up, and obviously, you see, we get lots of maps from it, which is great to see. Then the process was, as you have heard, they went through the first round. We got 14 maps for that first hearing. The Board narrowed it down to their two preferred maps, their two focus maps, as we call them, 109 and 112. And then, there was another round of hearings, and we got 17 more maps in that second round. So the public took that input from the focus maps and went with it. And when you look at these lines, this is where I love this tool. They do look, you know, jagged and things like that. That's because of the geography. So look at these funny shapes. They look funny, because they go up in the hills, and census blocks don't like hills. So see, when we put the satellite image on, well, it makes a lot more sense. It's picking up the houses. It's picking up the houses. You know, and we're leaving these larger areas out. Part of it, and a lot of the question's been, why are there these jagged edges? Well, we get these blocks. The purple lines are your census blocks. So for example, here, yes, we would have loved to get these houses, but unfortunately, the census counted this block of houses with these houses down here on Poway Road. So if you move these, well, you gotta move those too. So these are the tough decisions that come into play, and we didn't hide anything. You know, right on this tool is the Board members' locations. And you'll hear a lot of comment about the Board members' locations, because we didn't hide it. It was out there, and the public was perfectly open to discussing it. So you can see the different shapes. You get the same thing over here, where you have one census block stretching from the edge of this neighborhood all the way down here. So that's- a lot of those jigs and jags, essentially all of the jigs and jags, are because of those. Then, a lot of the discussion was Rancho Bernardo in the public comments and all that. Let me address that a little bit. The adopted map actually keeps- and if you're hearing the other night, you heard, why didn't they follow the freeway? It keeps pretty much all of Rancho Bernardo east of the freeway together. The exception is the golf course, and then there's a neighborhood up here that also is out because of population balancing. But that is part of what gives two board members for Rancho Bernardo. They have two board members that will answer to those areas. So it is pretty close to keeping the area together. And the high school is in Area B, in this case, which is a change from the earlier versions. And when you look at the different neighborhoods, suddenly, these shapes make a lot more sense, you know? And again, yes, we are looking, you know, no surprise, the board members are together. And with schools, this is particularly a consideration because of the way it works with election years. Some of the maps put four of the board members together. Three of them are up in 2018. One of them's up in 2020. It wouldn't be an election between those four. They couldn't all four run, and the winner get elected. Three would be off the Board in 2018. Because of the rules, if there's a 2020 board member, that seat is assigned 2020. They would be removed. No vote, no opting for the voters to decide whether or not they deserve reelection. The action of the demographer's pen would wipe them out of office. So this is what we heard from, in particular, from Kelly Logan and Chris Hazel from the Poway Federation of Teachers, who didn't endorse a map. All they said is, "Make sure whatever map you adopt leaves the choices up to the voters." And this map, yes, there are some odd shapes. It's- most of them are almost entirely explained by the hills and the census block lines. But it does put two board members together, but they're both up in the same year. So they both have the right to run, and the voters would decide. And then, it does leave each of the seats up to voters. So I'm at the end of my- our time. Happy to answer any questions you have later on. But that really is the end result, is there's a lot of- you know, no one in the region has any doubt that there is controversy in Poway Unified that, of course, spilled into this very political process, as this process is political everywhere. But the question is, is will this process be used to change the makeup of the Board by removing them? Or will it simply change how the voters decide which board members are elected? And this map does follow communities. It does respect communities of interest the way that our other clients have. And I'm happy to answer more- any questions and go into more detail as you wish.
Can you address whether the Board-
We're out of time. I respect your time, and happy to come back and answer anything else.
Does the Board have any questions? Any questions on the district presentation? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now start calling speakers from the comment cards, and they will be called in the order as they were submitted. So, again, please remember that each speaker will have two minutes to make their comments. And if you could- if there's new information that would like to be presented. So the first speaker that we have will be calling the first three speakers, so that there won't be any laps and people coming up. So the first speaker will be Mark Johnson. Second speaker will be Jana Johnson. And the third speaker will be Charles Sellers. Thank you.
Ready to start now?
You may.
Yes. I'm here to support Map 109. Others will address the obvious gerrymandering of Map 131. And I do understand that when you try to gerrymander for one reason, you can end up with a lot of raggedness, and you can end up with people at one side of the freeway. But if you don't drive that gerrymandering for that reason, then you can clean up the map, and you'll see some cleaned-up maps. So, what I'm here to address, however, is not the gerrymandering. I'm here to address the legitimacy of Map 131. 131 was created and posted after a deadline for consideration. The map posted online on November 31st was not Map 131. Map 131 was created on Friday, November 3rd. You can go to the district website. I have some information here that shows all of the different plans, Plan 125 to 131, when they were created, and what the website says. And the only one that has a discrepancy, meaning the creation date- in all cases, the creation date occurs before the posting date, except for 131. 131 says on the website that it was added on 11/1, but it was created on 11/3. And I have some information here on how you can verify that yourself. So, we did that using Adobe Acrobat. Let's see. The bottom line is that that was only six days before the November 9th meeting, so Map 131 is illegal per the California Election Code 110, which states that seven days are required for a draft map to be published prior to consideration. The last thing I'll say is just that, you know, there's been a lot of controversy in Poway, and I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify really quick. So you're saying two minutes? Because originally, we thought we had three.
We normally would- we normally do three, and we limit it to 20 minutes, but because of the large number-
Of speakers?
-of constituents that would like to issue, so we tried to give each one two minutes.
Gather my thoughts, because I have just two and a half minutes here. Okay. Okay. Good evening. I guess I'm officially starting now. Good evening. I did bring this map, just for everybody to see it, and I've sent you all emails before, so I think you've seen this map, which does show- and I understand what Mr. Johnson, not my husband, but the other Mr. Johnson, was saying about gerrymandering and trying to say that this isn't. But this is so clearly, these are tiny little roads that they decided to make these districts on. This is not Black Mountain Road, which is the main thoroughfare that goes through Penasquitos. So if you were going to divide it, that's where you would have divided it. This is around their residences, and I had a problem with that. So I'll say this. "The political gerrymandering issue is now front and center in the news and in the courts. Politicians defining districts to ensure their continuity in Pennsylvania and North Carolina are being tossed out by the courts and told to redraw fair boundaries. With the new enforcement of the California Voting Rights Act, our local agencies are now doing initial district maps. Many have done so very honestly and fairly, but the PUS Board has not. Our community is now asking you to inform them and subsequent other school boards in San Diego County that political gerrymandering will not be accepted. If Map 131 stands, the doors are now open for all others who are self-serving, you know, self-serving politicians to do what they want. Better to send the message now rather than see it become prevalent in the future." "Also, I spoke at your previous Board meeting and pointed out that the PUSD map posted on Map 131 on Wednesday, November 1st, was subsequently removed and replaced with a completely different map by November 3rd, as my husband mentioned. This manipulation of the maps is unethical. The district did not inform the public of this switch, and this brand-new map posted should have been numbered 132." So I guess I'll jump on past that. "The best solution is to go back to the vote. The map that got the greatest number of community maps, 109. It was reviewed early in the process before all this major politicking began. Has great communities of interest that mirror our established cities." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maps like this, as we draw into districts, are supposed to protect communities of interest. That's the law, and that's our understanding. I want to draw your attention to the yellow square near the bottom of the page. This is known as Christmas Card Lane in Rancho Penasquitos. It is indeed a community. It's about six square blocks, comprises three streets. You'll see that it's in a densely populated suburban area. It's bounded by three major roads, but not bifurcated by any of them. This is genuinely a community that many of you may have heard of or seen, and many of the people behind me pushed their kids in strollers down over the past 30 years. The second page shows how that area is cut up by Map 131. You'll note there are three districts, A, C, and D. The six square blocks are bifurcated by Renato Street. Everything north of Renato Street is in District C. Everything south of Renato Street is in District D. But this is all one neighborhood that participates in Christmas Card Lane. And like I said, many of you have been there yourselves. If you go to the next page, you'll see a slightly larger version that shows the actual houses. And you'll see that someone who lives on the north side, the even side of Renato Street, is in District C. Someone who lives in the south side, the odd side of Renato Street, is in District D. That means you've got a kid whose best friend lives across the street from him who's in a different trustee district. That street is 20 feet wide. You can see it's only three blocks long. So it's clearly not the place to put a border for a district trustee issue. And you'll note the X, the blue X there, that's my house. I sit literally right on the edge of these three districts as they converge. And so, I think that this is an inappropriate place to divide a community. The last page simply reiterates points that I've made in the past that I encourage you to consider again before you make your decision. Thank you.
The next three speakers in this order, Joyce Heine, Michael Wield, and Terry Norwood.
Good evening. Thank you for coming and listening. My name is Joyce Heine. I am a retired teacher in San Diego City Schools, and in fact, helped several of the Poway City School- Poway School Board people become elected. I walked precincts for them. So I'm a little disappointed, I'm very disappointed, in the way that this process has occurred. And one issue that I'd like to bring out is that I think that there's a trust level that's an issue in Poway with the school board. And going back to the bond issue, which of course, still resonates to the community. So I think that the issue of this election doesn't sound or feel like it's representing the community effectively. And I think it would bring a lot of questions in the community members. So, which leads me to my second point of representation. So I feel that currently, Map 131 does not represent the community members and the students or the parents, and that there will be a lot of underrepresented schools. And that the purpose of the redistricting is to give those underrepresented districts or community a voice. And I don't think that this would allow them to have a voice. So I am speaking in support of Map 109. Thank you.
I just want to make a correction. It's Michelle Wield, not Michael.
I'm so sorry.
That's my parents' fault for only putting one L in the name. Everybody's already said what I was going to say. I did want to just make a point that Mr. Johnson made, that on Map 31 not being legitimate, my high school senior was able to click on the inspect button on that map, and it shows that it was modified on 11/3. Not good. It looks really shady. So, all I want to say is the map I really like is 130, because it lays out the districts by high school. But I will go with Map 109 also as my second choice.
Good evening, Board members and notable guests. Thank you for your attention this evening and dedicating yourself to ensuring the public interest is not only considered, but implemented. I want to point out that in the packet that we've been given tonight, this is not an accurate map of 131, so another reason to go back and check to see the accuracy of Map 131. I ask you to please reject Map 131 as the district map for the school board elections in the Poway Unified School District. After the legal required meetings were held, a tally was taken place of the map choice of the community. The summation is given to you as one of the documents I just gave you. At the final meeting, Map 131 was chosen by the Board majority. 151 community citizens participated in this process, yet the Board chose a map that went against the wishes of the people. The map chosen, as you can see, was not even one of the top three. What you cannot see is that one chosen ensures three board members retain their seats, contrary to what the demographer just stated. And I will be looking back over the video of this recording to make sure that I heard him correctly say what he did, because is he working for the district leadership, or is he working for the taxpayers? Focusing on the sequence of events to express why I and many in our community are dismayed with this process, the third meeting in the process, the number of maps needed to be narrowed down upon recommendation from the demographer, map 109 and 112 were chosen by the board unanimously. At the final meeting, a lengthy discussion was held with a slightly tweaked version of 112 being chosen, map 131. There is skepticism as to whether 131 was even posted legally, as you already know. I ask you to please, does that mean? Thank you very much for your time.
The next three in order are Lori McLaughlin, Ned Beatty, and Eleanor Patella.
Hi, everybody. I'm a new voice, I'm in favor of map 131. I believe it meets the concerns that were raised in the lawsuit and that matters a lot to me. It actually amplifies the voice of our Hispanic community in Section E without drowning out anybody else's voices or diluting anybody's voice, and I think that matters. It's important to me that each district has multiple high schools and middle schools within it and multiple communities that they represent because I believe that honors the fact that we are a unified school district. This is not about attendance, this is not about where kids are going to school, it's about helping the district as a whole. I've lived through the instability, I've had kids in the schools for nine years and counting, and I crave the opportunity for stability. If my member does well, does the job they say they're going to do, I want to have a chance to keep them there and not be forced to lose institutional knowledge. Losing institutional knowledge can be very expensive. So if somebody is doing a good job, I want the opportunity to keep them and not be forced to get rid of them. People are using words like gerrymandering and redistricting. This is districting and it is not diminishing anybody's voice or vote the way this map has been drawn. Gerrymandering is about grouping a whole bunch of people in one place so that they only get one member and other people can have two or three members. That's really not what's going on here. This is a very balanced map in terms of population and I think that matters. And I do believe that the success of the district as a whole, honoring the unified nature of the district, will do the best for my kids and frankly, I think it'll do the best for my property values and I am sick of the instability. We have a new superintendent, she's eager, she's ready to go, let's give her some stability over the next couple of years and let it happen. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ned Beatty. I live in Sabre Springs in the Poway Unified School District. Map 131 represents an attempt by some PUSD board members to choose their voters instead of the voters choosing their representatives. Map 131 is almost identical to map 117, that it was introduced about a month prior to 131. The earlier map, 117, received only one favorable comment and six unfavorable ones because of the illogical boundaries. It seems to me that in the wake of bad press surrounding selection of self-serving maps, a plan was made to put forward a substantially similar map to 117 at the latest possible date to reduce public outcry against it. The new map was 131 and it was posted November 3rd, just six days before the meeting. Map 131 does not represent the will of the people by design and should be rejected. I support map 109. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eleanor Patella and I am a resident, taxpaying, member of the district. I have a new great-granddaughters just starting in the Poway School District and I'm getting involved. I also got involved in voting for some of the board members and have been very disappointed in some of the, I feel really, a lot of underhanded things have been taking place and it really bothers me. I really feel that 109 is the better way to go. You know that the one was put in late and to me, right there, it should have been, should have been put aside. There's been quite a few things with the school board that have been bothering me, but this one does bother me too and I would hope that you'll see this and vote for 109. Thank you.
Next three people in order is Michelle Dirksen, this is Michelle, it's not Michael, right? Michelle Dirksen, sorry. Tori Blickfeldt and Gabby Dow.
Good evening. As a teacher in the Poway Unified School District, I actually support map 131 and here's why. The wishes of the voters should be honored. Two of our current board members were voted into office until 2020, but some of the maps would potentially remove them from office prior to the end of their term. This doesn't respect the votes cast in the last election. PUSD needs stability on the school board. Some of the maps up for discussion have the potential to eliminate many current board members all at once. Our district has recently experienced many changes in key leadership positions. We need school board members who can hit the ground running and keep us moving forward as a district. Map 131 guarantees that at least two current board members and as many as four will have an opportunity to potentially continue their work as trustees. Map 131 will provide some stability on the PUSD school board and it also respects the wishes of voters.
My name is Tori Blickfeldt and I've been a parent, a homeowner in the district for the last 15 years. I'm also a high school teacher in the district and I support map 131. I've examined all the maps except for the unbalanced ones and 131 is the best map under consideration. As a high school teacher and a parent, my first thought was that we need to make sure to set up future board members for success by making sure that they have more than one high school in their boundary area. This will make sure that there's not undue pressure on them from a single high school constituency, that the map does not pit them against one another, and that every high school has two board members looking out for its best interest. I know that board members are not involved in day-to-day decisions, but who knows what difficult board-level decisions may, need to be made in the future. Map 131 also creates boundary areas that are ethnically, culturally, and linguistically diverse, which is the reason why the state required the boundaries to be redrawn or drawn. My children, who are in the district for their entire school lives, graduated. In a few years, I'll retire, the current board members will move on to retire, pursue other political interests. How map 131 affects current board members is less important to me than that we choose a good template. Although we may need to modify this map due to the census, and we probably will, we should start with the best possible version. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. I am a parent in the school district, I'm also a business owner, and I have had a wonderful experience with my children at Valley Elementary School, which is the Spanish immersion program. And I very much would like to hear a little bit more in the future on that there is not a Latino population. I think a lot of people in the audience were surprised by that comment from the consultant. One of the speakers in support of map 131 said it was because it creates a diverse area. So there's a lot of conflicting information. I am opposed to map 131. I trust your judgment to choose the right map. 109, I think, was fine. We were following a process and it was clear that that was the one that came up through consensus. Then the process went completely off the rails. People have spoken about the input that was provided by the public. Map 112 was being pushed forward by three board members, by TJ Zane, by Michelle O'Connor-Ratcliffe, and by Darsh Patel, and that was the one map that had the most negative comments. It only had four votes of support. And so the public does not trust the process. We do not trust these three board members. I don't know if they're here tonight, but we do have board members Kimberley Beatty and Charles Sellers here and they are trying to have transparency, they are trying to have professionalism. And my biggest concern and my biggest message to you here tonight is that we need your help here at Poway Unified. Map 1, this process is one example of the unsound judgment that we see time and time again. I remember TJ Zane, when we were looking at the vote tallies, took it upon himself to say he was looking up the different members and where they lived and there has been example after example after example of unsound judgment, of unethical activity. And that is the bigger concern for me here at Poway Unified beyond this mapping process, but because we have people responsible for our kids' safety that we simply cannot trust. And so we hope that we can count on you to help us rectify all of the issues that we have here at Poway Unified. Thank you so much.
The next three speakers I would like to call would be Pete Babbage, Cass Camanets, and Katie Kemble.
I prepared for three minutes. Pete Babbage, I'm a 44 Poway, 44-year Poway resident, four kids through the district, starting a grandchild, starting school next year. The most salient point, if you were asked to do districts and you didn't know where the current trustees lived, I have an impossible time imagining someone would come up with map 131. It just doesn't fit. It does a poor job of keeping communities together, it divides many of them. It also uses interior roads as a divider, which is a real problem. We had that with the districting in the city of Poway. If you stick to main roads, main geographic boundaries, the whole issue of quote "gerrymandering" goes away. The current board, who is supporting map 131, says continuity and stability is the thing they need to be focused on. In 2014, there were three brand-new board members. One incumbent that had been there for a while and one that had only been there for two years. It didn't explode. They handled it. So what I'm saying is, is that this issue of stability and security, or stability ret, I'm sorry, continuity and stability is overblown. It also fails to recognize that there are plenty of people out there in other districts that could do just as good a job. All right? I urge the board to reject 131. Let me just finish by saying this, 131 doesn't feel right. And I'm embarrassed to say that I voted for and helped or walked precincts to help get elected for two of the people that are supporting 131.
Thank you.
My name is Cass Camanets. I grew up in Ranch Bernardo and have lived in Forest Ranch for 15 years. We have three children in PUSD schools. I currently serve as the president of the Stone Ranch Elementary PTA, was the proud head coach of the Oak Valley Science Olympia National Team, and I'm also the Volunteer of the Year at Oak Valley. So school is at the center of my family's community and always has been. I strongly disagree with the decision to approve map 131 for the following reasons. The decision does not comport with the intent and meaning of the California Voting Rights Act and instead favors sitting incumbents for the sake of continuity. The decision directly contradicts the overwhelming support of PUSD residents to follow simple and logical geographical boundaries that would allow voters to elect a voice to represent their community interests. The CVRA ensures the votes of protected classes of citizens are not diluted at an out, under an out-large system. Map 131 does the opposite, however, by propagating the dilution of our communities of interest and distorting obvious natural community boundaries. In my own neighborhood, map 31 imposes an arbitrary boundary approximately one-half north of my house and then slices through Del Norte High School. There's no high school in my district. Rather than use the natural community boundaries, the board approved map 31 to preserve continuity. Why? Because four of the current board members live in one neighborhood, so under a community-aligned map, up to three of the trustees would probably lose their seat. One trustee emphasized in that hearing that there was a quote "huge learning curve to becoming a trustee and the job is quote 'not easy.'" This may be true, but the board's undeniable self-interested position demonstrates that they believe that continuity is a greater concern than preventing the dilution of votes and, number two, that the sitting board members are the only ones capable, capable of this job. This could, should concern every PUSD citizen. As you are aware, public comments via email and at the November meeting strongly supported community-aligned maps. The board ignored the majority of its constituents in favor of retaining current seats, plain and simple. I support maps 130 and 121 because of their continuity and along the lines of the geographic boundaries of our high schools. Thank you for your time.
My name is Katie Kemble. I'm a small business owner and I'm also the parent of two children who attend Design 39 campus. They're actually here tonight. And I'm here in support of map 131 and I want to thank the board members for giving this process such careful consideration and public input. After reviewing the map and discussing it with trusted members of my community, I feel confident that it is the best option for PUSD. The selected districts in map 131 each contain at least two high schools with overlapping middle and elementary schools. The districts amplify, rather than dilute, minority representation for Hispanic and Asian populations in our region. Map 131 also provides much-needed stability for our board. Please approve map 131 and allow our PUSD board to return their attention to the real issues that our students face. We're one of the most underfunded districts in the state of California, let alone the entire United States, and I know what it's like because I used to live on the East Coast and my kids had proper funding for their education and they don't have it here. The board, the PUSD board wants to do well by our kids and I think they've given this map more than its fair share of time in review. It's time for them to go back to what they've been elected to do, which is to look out for the interest of our kids. And if this map is going to be redrawn in two years anyway, can we have some continuity and let them do the job that we elected them to do? Thank you.
I think we have. Or we start all over again? Next lineup is Steve Dow, Kimberley Garnier, and Christopher Garnier.
Hello, my name's Steve Dow. I'm a parent and taxpayer in the Poway School District. I'm here strongly in support of map 109. Earlier on, when we saw this presentation, it was touted that this is a first high-tech process where we use to get feedback from the community. So that's great. Well, we got the feedback and we didn't, it looks like we didn't pay much attention to it because the clear feedback was map 109. You know, we talked, it's a, it's a map that is simple, it follows things that make sense, it passes the sniff test, it passes the eye test. It's in line with high school areas, just like state center, state legislator maps tend to be, tend to give you a guideline to follow county maps. It makes sense that these high school maps would be followed as well. So it has all that going for it and I don't understand, it has to be like a really, really good reason for the district to override that. When you, all these maps that went out there, I heard it said that, well, map 131, for example, is great for diversity or it helps linguistically, you know, vary things. All these maps that were out there apparently met all the diversity requirements. So the, the community picked one. Why? It would have to be a really strong reason to override that. So the only reason I can see clearly is the, those map edges in the, in the homes of the district board. North Carolina court just shut down partisan gerrymandering just this month and this is not necessarily partisan because you have people of both, both parties on the board, but it's a clear voting block and this, this essentially is essentially the same thing as political gerrymandering. gerrymandering. So I'm voting A. Please vote against 131 and for 109.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kim Garnier, and it's so nice to have you all here. This is an issue that's very important to our community. I found myself, as I was preparing for tonight, not being able to find the words. It's like trying to describe the color blue to somebody. It's just blue. It's just logical, 109. MAP 131 is supported by people who financially benefit from keeping certain board members on the board. I've heard the demographers downplay what the community wants, and he is also a paid consultant. This comes down to what the voters want versus what the self-serving board members want and the organizations that they pay. This community is trying to rebuild. Unfortunately, the board majority is serving themselves and not the community. We have some really phenomenal people in this district. Two of them are board members, trustee Beatty and trustee Sellers. And one of us, as a community member, Ms. Gabby Dow, and what she said tonight, I hope you replay it over and over again, because that's everything. The facts and figures support MAP 109. The community supports MAP 109. MAP 131, I think Mr. Babbage said this, doesn't pass the smell test. Mr. Dow said it as well, it doesn't pass the smell test. This is an easy, easy decision. I hope that you will aid in rebuilding Poway Unified. I went K through 12, and now my children go here. I love this district, and we need help. The corruption that exists is just a whirlpool, and I keep thinking, okay, it's going to get better, it's going to get better. And it's not. And we're fighting from the inside, but we need you as well, please. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you vote for MAP 109.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here. Trustee Dallin, how are you, ma'am? Really good to see you. I'm here to support MAP 109 as well. I went through K through 12 here. My kids, my three kids are now within the district. We're on a ship that's sailing without a captain. We're begging you guys to open your ears to us, to listen to us. Help guide our ship back on course, guide the Poway Unified ship back on course. We're begging you. Trustee Patel, trustee Zane, and trustee O'Connor, they chose those maps not to serve the community, but to serve themselves. Their self-serving interest. We beg you, we plead with you. Help get this ship back on track, from the bond issue, to our superintendent that's facing criminal charges, to our new superintendent who quite frankly doesn't have the gumption to lead us. We need you. I plead with you. I implore you and I beg you. Please reject 131 and adopt 109 for us.
The next three speakers in order, Tina Shaw, Stella, I believe it's Panapelli. Panapelli, okay, thank you. And Julianne Phillips. Did I still get it wrong?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to share my voice as well. My name's Tina Shaw, and I am a teacher here in this district. I don't live within the district, but I have been working in this district for several decades now. Thank you for the opportunity to have such an open opportunity to, for residents, staff, administration, and students to give input into the districting of our district. I support MAP 131. I feel like MAP 131 meets the needs of the districting, and it allows for some continuity during a time where our district has been going through lots of changes. So I hope you consider 131 as the new districting map for our district.
Good evening, board members. My name is Stella Panarelli. I attend Design 39 campus, and I support MAP 131. You should support it so that the board can get back to the matters important to students like art, which is really important to me. I've actually drawn all over my paper. I am really passionate about art and science, and as my mom, Katie, said, back on the East Coast, there were tons of things. We had traveling science teachers. True, they actually traveled within the classrooms with little carts. It was cool. And we had a guinea pig. That was fun. And yeah, I just wanted to say that, thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Julianne Phillips. I am a resident in the district, and I strongly encourage you to reject MAP 131. MAP 131 does not reflect the wishes of the community members who participated in this process. Over a hundred and fifty members of the PUSD community participated in the districting map process. Each person studied the many proposed maps in detail, sent in their comments, and many attended and spoke at the November 9th board meeting. At that meeting, trustees O'Connor-Radcliffe, Zane, and Patel disregarded the will of the people and put forward MAP 131, protecting their ability to continue to use incumbency status to run for the school board in years to come. MAP 131 is self-serving to those three sitting board members. It is illogical in its geographic design, carefully carving around the residences of those three members. MAP 131 does not take into consideration communities of interest. I urge you to adopt MAP 109, a map which decidedly reflects the goal of the mapping process, to serve communities of interest. PUSD has five distinct communities of interest: Forest Ranch, Rancho Bernardo, Rancho Penasquitos, Saber Springs/Carmel Mountain, and Poway, all diverse communities with specific needs and interests. Each of these communities will decidedly benefit from a representative trustee from each of the districts outlined in MAP 109. Thank you for carefully considering this important issue in my community and inviting we, the public, to participate.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be in following order, John Riley, Michael DePrima, and Anna
Good evening, board members, and welcome to Poway Unified. My name's John Riley, longtime resident, parent in this community. I urge you to vote against MAP 131. It was interesting, is when these trustee area maps were going to be considered, I knew this was going to be a hot topic because of the obvious advantage of incumbency when politicians run for election again. And here we are. You know, I would like to ask you to consider a sense of proportion. The map that's up on your screen covers our entire school district of 100 square miles. Yet, four of our five board members live within a one-mile radius. Draw a dot on a map, one mile around, four of the five live there. And conveniently, that one-mile radius out of the whole 100 square miles is carved up into three zones. I mean, we talk about not passing the sniff test or the eye test, I mean, there it is. Now, it's also interesting that last night was the State of the Union address. Two years ago, President Obama gave a State of the Union address, and he specifically called out the issue of gerrymandering and said that it, you know, the whole process of politicians choosing their voters is unethical, is a conflict of interest, and leads to distortions in what we're seeing with our public government. And that's what we're experiencing here at our own school district level. Many other speakers have brought up the history of what's happened in this school district. Poway Unified has had a sterling reputation for a very long time, until, really, about in the last 10 years, we started to get very bad press due to the billion-dollar bond, an unethical superintendent that was stealing children's money for his own behalf. The public trust has been violated. MAP 131 continues that violation of the public trust.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I wanted to express my opposition for MAP 131. It is a clear violation of our democratic process. A lot of what I've written has already been said, but I think the most important point was expressed by the first gentleman who spoke, that this was submitted after the deadline. As a student of Poway Unified and now graduated, we were taught that when stuff is submitted late, there are consequences. And we should at least hold our officials to the same standard that we hold our children. It was also said that four or five of the board members live within one square mile. And it's pretty clear that MAP 131 answers only one question that they were looking for, is how do I protect myself? And that, to me as a voter, says one thing. Their interests are above mine. I ask you, the board, to review MAP 131 and reject it for it being late and being a clear violation of what these districts are supposed to accomplish. Yeah, if you're curious, I supported MAP 21, but it sounds like 109 is the public favor, and I also support MAP 109. Thank you for having me.
So the next three speakers will be Laura DePrima, Janet Latang, and Danielle Rowley.
Good evening. My name is Laura DePrima, and I'm a registered voter who resides within Poway Unified School District, and I have several children attending multiple schools within the district. I am opposed to the adoption of MAP 131 because it does not support definable communities of interest. It clearly bifurcates several neighborhoods, and it just is not what the people wanted. It clearly pushes a personal agenda for several of the board members to protect themselves and not the interest of the people that they were elected to represent. As far as the other maps, I too supported MAP 121 as a fair and balanced compromise. 109 works too, and it seems to be what most of the people want. I will say what is probably more upsetting is finding out that a board member would misuse and abuse voter registration records to look up addresses of people. I am just horrified that I can't plan a playdate for my child because they won't give me a phone number or address, and this man can stalk people to see if they live in the district? That is clear abuse of our system, and it should be illegal. It should, you know, be criminal. And that, I think, is more upsetting than this whole map thing. I just, I'm shocked. I'm just shocked that somebody that is supposed to be representing us can stalk us like that and look at our addresses. Just horrifying.
Good evening, San Diego County Board of Education trustees. Thank you very much for traveling to Poway Unified this evening, and I appreciate you being here to hear our concerns. I'm here opposing MAP 131 as well. At the November 9th meeting, Superintendent Kim Phelps handed out a tally sheet to the PUSD trustees and the community members in attendance, and that showed what the community was thinking about each of the maps. The tally shows the opinions emailed to the district for and against each map. Not only on this tally sheet are the general opinions, okay, not shown on this tally sheet are the general opinions shared by most of the writers, because I read all the emails several times, as their general thoughts on PUSD's redistricting process. By my count, at least 47 members of the community shared that they would like to see the map selected for redistricting represent the communities that make up Poway Unified School District: Poway, Rancho Bernardo, Forest Ranch/Del Sur, Rancho Penasquitos, and Carmel Mountain/Saber Springs. And for me, of particular importance was a community request from Forest Ranch and Del Sur communities, the communities that pay by far the highest taxes in Poway Unified School District. By over a factor of 20, 30, 40, we're talking $100 for some areas to over $6,000 for others. So that community really needs to be able to stay together as a community to make sure that their tax, that they have representation and taxation on the board. Also, in over 20 emails, the community asked that the trustees vote with integrity and not out of personal gain when selecting the map for redistricting. I'm sorry to say that I don't think that three of our trustees considered the community in their decision. The majority was voted for MAP 121 and 109, and 131 got the third-most support. Two of our trustees did support all of the maps that were in favor, and when they had to select their favorites, they selected only ones that the community supported. Three of our trustees did not. So thank you to those two.
Hi, good evening. My name is Danielle Rowley. I'm CEO of an educational technology startup. I'm a resident, and I have two kids in school, and they're here with me as well to help understand the process, the political process, I think is really important. I support MAP 131. I believe it was the most rational and scientifically chosen map for three reasons. I believe it is most important to have two high schools per district. I think that makes it fair. I also believe that it's a little bit dangerous to divide by neighborhoods because that, when you divide by neighborhood, it protects the ethnic identity, and what we want to do is we want to make it fair and amplify the minority voices in our community. We are one community, we're Poway Unified, and I believe that. And I also believe, finally, that it supports the stability of our district and our superintendent, which she needs our support. So thank you very much. I just believe MAP 131 is the best for our schools and for our kids.
We have two additional speakers left.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Vazquez. I'm a resident of Rancho Penasquitos, and I have been for, again, since 2006. I'm a graduate of Mount Carmel, of Black Mountain, and of Sunset Hills, so this is definitely my hood. I am here today to read for the record the letter that I emailed the board on January 10th. Dear County Boards Members and Superintendent, we write as supporters of MAP 131 selected by Poway Unified School District Board of Education, and ask that you vote to give it final approval when it comes before you. In sum, we approve of our board's process, transparency, and reasons for selecting the final map. There are some people in our PUSD community who did not support this map, but that does not provide adequate reason for you to overturn the board's decision. Reasonable people can disagree, and there is no way for the board to adopt a map that would satisfy everyone. This is a good map that follows all the legal requirements, including those that precipitated the need for this by trustee area change, and it is supported by a substantial portion of the community. Please vote to approve MAP 131. Our PUSD board was steered through the mapping by a lawyer and a demographer, expert guidance that ensured a smooth and transparent process. The board held four public hearings, provided more notice, many notices of those meetings, and sent numerous emails to all PUSD employees. emails to all PUSD employees and parents to make sure as many people as possible had an opportunity to participate. The public answered the call submitting 31 maps, all of which were posted online at least seven days ahead of the hearing, at which they were considered, and many public comments, all of which were posted on the district website. The district even produced a tally of the number of comments received on each map, which made it very clear which five maps rose to the top of the public's interest. So do I need to stop? I can't read it in as, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
It seems like I'm always bringing up the rear, but I'm sure you're glad I'm the last one. I've lived in the district since 1970, so with Pete Babich and myself, we've got 91 years in this district. And both of us, I'm sure, love our community so very much. But when you make the decision, and I hope you reject MAP 131, that was born out of the corruption of our former superintendent, John Collins, who is thick as thieves with two current trustees, Michelle Radcliffe and TJ Zane. And the MAP 131 is so self-serving for those trustees. And our third new trustee is in the pocket of Michelle O'Connor-Radcliffe. So whatever, she's just a duplicate of that voice. So that's a coalition that I think has dis-served our community. And as for the teachers that spoke for 131, they have a financial interest in keeping those three trustees on the board. They're an automatic vote for pay raises. So I want you to consider the corruption our district has gone through, and this district needs outside help, and I'm looking at it right now. Thank you.
I really hate to disappoint you, Mr. Wilson. You are not the last speaker. We had an additional card come in later. So that would be Naomi? I'm gonna try this. Lukazuski?
As the parent of a recent PUSD graduate and a teacher in PUSD, I support MAP 131 for the following reasons. It maintains capacity and experience on the Poway Unified School Board. Experience and knowledge are vital to the success of any organization. MAP 131 allows for incumbents who are familiar with PUSD processes and background to remain, while also creating an opportunity for new board members. It allows us to maintain a consistency that will enable us to continue moving forward with programs that benefit students. MAP 131 does not guarantee incumbents a permanent seat on the board, but it does spare us the learning curve that would be needed by a board comprised of all new members. The time needed by a brand-new board to become familiar with details of plans already in process could delay opportunities for student learning and enrichment. MAP 131 holds trustees responsible to more than one high school boundary area. Avoiding the alignment of board members to single high school areas maintains their responsibility to all students in the Poway Unified School District, not just the students whose parents vote for them. Having district boundaries that overlap school attendance boundaries maintains and honors our culture as a unified school district. The school board is ultimately responsible for ensuring all PUSD students receive the best education possible. Dividing them according to the high school boundaries is contrary to that principle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
We had a number of commentary cards, and I want to let you know that the recording secretary will ensure that the county committee members will have an opportunity to review all the pink comment cards that have been submitted. I further want to thank all of you who came out on a busy evening to have your say. We appreciate that. Okay? And now, do any of my board members have questions?
I have just a couple of questions for the demographer. So, and just a couple here. Once a map is selected, will the elections be held at the district level for both the primary election and the general election? Or will the top two vote-getters in the district have to run citywide?
So in Poway, that's the system used in San Diego. In Poway, there's no primary runoff. There's just one election in November.
Okay. And so, in that election, if one of the two candidates are through, if any one candidate receives over 50% of the vote, can they win outright in the primary?
They win outright with whatever percentage they get. They can win with 20% of the vote if there are six candidates. So it's whoever gets the most votes regardless of if it's a majority of votes or not. It's just that they run once and whoever wins that, whoever gets the most votes in that election wins.
General election. That's what I'm saying. Okay. I get it. Okay. And that's not, that didn't change with your redistricting of, what I'm saying is, that system didn't change because you redistrict the maps?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Can I just, quick question? You showed earlier on the map, and I didn't see that, where the current board members live on the map. Can you share that with us again, please?
Sure. Let me, mouse to come to me here.
And how is that identified there?
So it highlights the census block that they live in, because we're drawing and using census blocks and we didn't want to put a star right on their house. Makes people nervous.
Okay. Yeah.
So this highlights the census block. The reason some of them are larger than others is we have some funny-shaped census blocks. But, so for example, in 131, you can see the two there. In, okay. Anyone can look at, anyway. And then in 109, you can see the two.
131 is one of the ones I'd like to see, right? So can you, yeah, can you share 131 with us, please? Again, can you point out, I see two.
Yes, there's trustee Zane here, trustee Sellers here, trustee O'Connor-Radcliffe here, and trustee Patel here.
Oh, God. Wow. So do we have, we have a copy of this with the information? Okay, great.
We have a copy with the trustees?
Yeah, that's what I'm implying. Okay.
We do. And this in here?
We got them. I don't know if it's here.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you. I just wanted to see that.
Okay. So what I'd like to do now is ask if there is a consensus on whether the county committee has sufficient information to make a decision at a future meeting?
I do. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
So at this point, if the county committee has sufficient information to make a decision, action will be taken at the regular meeting of the County Board of Education. I do have to tell you that it will be either February 14th or March 14th at the Joe Rinden Regional Technology Center. And the reason, I can't tell you right now, we're also in the middle of redistricting meetings for Cajon Valley, where we will, in San Diego. And so we will have to make that announcement at a later date. Thank you.
I will now move to close the public hearing. And reconvene the County Board of Education Special Meeting adjournment. So can I ask for a meeting, a motion for adjournment? Valdezia Munoz, second?
Second.
Thank you. So adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.